I have 6:30. Could we stand and give a pledge of the flag please? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to your republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. The first item on my agenda is to let you all know that the meeting is being videotaped by Mark Decracker and recorded by our court treasurer Denise Darkangelis. All future meetings of the dissolution planning committee will be videotaped by Mr. Decracker or someone he is associated with. The meetings are not subject to the New York State Open Meetings Law. However, the public will be able to sit in on the meeting and observe without making comments. And the meeting dates will be posted on our village website. And our website is villageoflyonsny.com. So if you go to that website once the committee establishes the days they will be meeting, they will be on the website. So it's my pleasure to introduce the members of the dissolution committee. I think we only have one representative missing tonight, and it's James Brady. Jim is on vacation until the 1st of March, and he will be back to join the committee. The committee is made up -- Thea Hall. Thea is the executive secretary at the Lyons Elementary School. And Joni Smith. We all know Joni because she's a great bookkeeper, the retired personnel from Wayne County Social Services. And Jim Casella. Jim is a businessman here in the community. He is also a town taxpayer because he resides in the town. So he brings a lot of good things to the committee because he can look at both sides of the village and town. John Sinelli. Well, John speaks for himself. He's been mayor, was mayor for four years, and he's been very active in the community for many years, fire department and various organizations. And he is well aware of what goes on with the village government. So he is the definite member to our committee. We've got Serge DiGardishevich who is -- he's a local person who has been involved with everything over the years. He's very civic-minded. He's retired now, and so he does have time to give to this committee. And we're very glad to have Serge say that he will be on our committee. We have our chief of police, who is going to be representing us. Dick Bogdan, I'm sorry, didn't say his name for those who don't know him. He will be working on our -- and hopefully, hopefully, he'll be working on our public safety committee. He brings with him 30 years of police work, 30 years of local government. And so he also is a member. And we have Brian Van Deolo, who represents the town of Lyons. He and legacy will be chairing that position as a representative from the town of Lyons. And we'd like to have Brian and Dan work with us. And the last member is myself. So I'm happy to introduce you all. And I'm very thankful that you agreed to become a committee member because it is a very difficult job. It's going to be very time-consuming for you. And I explained that to each of you. You all understand that it's not a committee in name-only. It's a working committee. All of the members that I have talked to have assured me that the village, that their findings and recommendations will take into consideration the needs of both the town and the village. It isn't going to be their personal feeling as to whether the village should be dissolved or not. They're not going to be able to look at the plan and make it the best that it can be for all the people in the village and all the people in the town. So I think we have an unbiased group of people here who will come up with a very good plan for the dissolution. That committee will make progress reports to the village board monthly as to where they are and how it's going, what is needed. We will be sure to make sure they have all the information, all of the records, everything that they need to be able to do with an appropriate plan. The study committee. Let me just give you a little background information. The consolidation or the dissolution is very time-consuming. It's going to take many hours from all of you. It requires local government officials and community stakeholders to dedicate hundreds of hours working. Now, don't panic. And oftentimes, we will be having our consultants here with the committee to study the government operations and analyze the potential impacts of restructuring actions. Invariably, the question has come up amongst us all as to the choice of people who are on the committee. And the recommendations from other communities have, has been that that committee be made up of the village mayor, representative from the town, or either their supervisor or other appointees. Supervisor, in our case, we've appointed Brian, a representative from municipal labor union. And I feel that our chief represents -- he's worked 30 years with public safety. He's also worked 30 years with public employees. And myself included, I've worked with public employees. And the balance of the committee would be made up of residents, business owners, property owners from each of the communities, meaning from the village and from the town. And I think we have a good cross-section of our community. We've got business people, government people. And I guess I mentioned Jim Brady isn't here, but Jim Brady also was on the town board for 20-plus years. And he was highway superintendent for Wayne County for 20-plus years. So Jim has the experience of not only government, he also has the experience of DPW. As we all know, the plan must be completed within 180 days, commencing with December 27. That 180 days will bring us into the end of June 2013. The deadline is very important for us to complete our plan for the dissolution. However, it is also imperative that the plan be quality product and not compromised because of required time constraints. We all will work to meet that deadline, but we want to make sure that what is presented to the public at public hearing is a good plan. We, this committee, will be addressing some of the following issues that will, in fact, will be required to include in the dissolution plan. Basic items like the name of the village, our boundaries, type of class of the village. A fiscal estimate of the cost of dissolving the village. It's a very important fiscal estimate for dissolving. Any plan for transferring or eliminating positions of public employees. We have to review the village assets, including, but not limited to, real and personal property and its fair value. We have to address the village's liabilities and indebtedness, bonded and otherwise, and its fair value. We have to review any agreements entered into with towns or other government agencies. The manner and means by which municipal services will continue to be provided to the village's residents following the village dissolution. Let me read that one again because I think that one is very important. The manner and means by which municipal services will continue to be provided to the village's residents following the village dissolution. Next item is terms for disposing of the village's assets, liabilities, and indebtedness, including the levying and collecting of taxes and assessments necessary to pay off any liability or indebtedness. Next is findings as to whether any of the village's local laws, ordinances, rules, or regulations will remain in effect after the dissolution for a certain period of time. And the time period I heard is two years. The dissolution effective date, time and place for the public hearings, which will be publicized once the plan is completed. And any other matter that this committee may decide is important to them. At the first meeting of our committee, a chairman will be elected or designated, appointed, whatever. There will be a chairman, probably a deputy in case that person may not be able to attend one of the meetings. And we also will be appointing people to chair a subcommittee. We have several subcommittees that are very important to the dissolution process. Public safety, public work, law and sewer administration, the financial. And these can, of course, be lumped together, but I think it's important, like public safety and for the administration, to have their own chair. And after all, we only have nine people. So you're going to be really pressured into getting all this information together and put into the proper paperwork, I guess is what we've got. At the last village board meeting of the village board, a point of MRB group to be our consultant in this dissolution process. Diana Smith and Connie Stewart are both here this evening. And they're sitting over here. Diana is over here, and Connie is there. And I just want to make a couple of comments about them. The MRB has been instrumental in working with local governments in whether it's been dissolution or shared services, savings. They developed what is called the SMI, which stands for Strategic Municipal Initiative Project. It provides advice and counsel regarding dissolution, shared services, cost savings, et cetera. All government agencies in New York State face the same goals for efficiency and lower costs. In the last few weeks, MRB has addressed the Association of Towns. The New York State Conference of Miers are in or on a pathway of having discussions with five other communities. Not maybe not dissolution, but shared services, cost savings, and so forth. So they know their business. They have put together a plan in what is called the SMI. And included in that plan is the New York Government Reorganization Citizen Empowerment Act, summary of the success for consolidation and dissolution, citizens' guide to petitioning for local government consolidation and dissolution, implications of village dissolution, intergovernmental cooperation, intermunicipal cooperation and consolidation, scoring opportunities for savings and improved delivery, legal framework for providing local government services, local government reorganization documents, and it goes on and on. All of these regulations, studies have often put together in a plan that was developed by MRB. And so they are well-qualified to help the village of Lyons in developing our plan for dissolution. So I'd like to turn the meeting, if I may, over to Diana or Connie or both.
I'm not sure that's because I can approach the bench. Is everybody here if I stand here? It's a pleasure to be here. And this is a tough and possibly overwhelming undertaking. But we are pretty passionate about local government, about your dedication, all of your dedication to local government. And that is really based on the tremendous opportunity for participation at the local government level. And we feel pretty strongly that that's what makes local governments the most democratic form of government and the strongest, the most accountable, the closest to the people. And because of that, local government inherently can be the most efficient form of government that exists. So what Mayor was talking about in terms of the SMI Strategic Municipal Initiatives Program and project with MRB Group, it really is meant to help local governments become even stronger, to demonstrate efficiency in all operations. And because MRB Group has been working with municipalities for 80 years, there's a tremendous knowledge base there, not just from the experience of MRB Group professional staff, but also because as they work through the challenges of local government with their client communities, that knowledge base grows with the experience of their client communities. So you benefit not just from professional expertise among the engineers and professionals at MRB Group, but also the experience of all of their clients and that tremendous knowledge base about not just what works, but also what doesn't work and what has been tried. And really, that benefits you tremendously. And because both Connie Sowrds and I have some direct experience with dissolution, it seemed appropriate that we would be working with the Village of Lyons on this particular project. It's not just because of that direct experience, though, that I believe that we were the best fit. Also, our team has been enhanced by the addition of an individual named Dr. Michael Hattery. And Dr. Hattery, I just want a chance to tell you a little bit about him and why his expertise is going to play such a significant role in this process. He is currently the director of the Program on Local and Intergovernmental Studies for the Rockefeller Institute of Government and at the University of Albany-Suni. He has his PhD from Cornell University in Community and Regional Studies. He gave his dissertation on revenue support for local public services. He has an incredible history of published works and research that have to do specifically with local government services and consolidation. And just to give you some highlights, he, there's several examples of published works that he's been involved with or has authored, including Fixing Dissolution: Learning from the Johnson City Dissolution Committee Members, written in 2010. It's a policy brief that summarizes lessons learned by dissolution committee members for the village of Johnson City. The Morristown Shared Services Study, the Morristown Survey of Citizen Satisfaction with Public Services and Support for Change. That's from February 2009. The Ulster County Shared Highway Services Study in 2010. Lessons on Sharing Services from the First Two Years of the SMSI Program, the highlights. And this is a government law and policy journal submission that he co-authored with two other individuals in 2007. This list goes on and on. This is an incredibly credentialed, knowledgeable, and experienced individual on local government services, on consolidation, on shared services. And the fact that he wanted to team with MRB Group and provide this expertise to the village of Lyons is going to be a tremendous benefit to the committee. As we kind of go through next steps in terms of hitting the ground running, starting tonight, he has made himself available for next week so that hopefully you can set up a first official meeting of the committee for next week, and he can come in and you get a chance to meet him. So I'm very, very excited about that. I have a lot of things I wanted to go through with you, so I'm just going to quickly jump into a list of items here. I wanted to talk a little bit about MRB Group's role and in addition to our team. We were obviously selected to assist in a process that will be conducted by the village, utilizing the expertise and the recommendations of the dissolution committee, who have been clearly charged by the mayor with the responsibility of analyzing services provided by both the town and the village, and then planning for an optimal dissolution path. And then finally, the implications of that dissolution path, the fiscal impacts and other impacts. But that includes recognition, as Mayor mentioned earlier, of the actual costs that are anticipated to be created by the dissolution process itself, as the statute points out, as well as recognition of the incentives that exist. The state does provide some incentives for dissolution. But you know, you recognize the incentives, you also need to recognize all of the costs that are involved. It's meant to be a thorough look. The key word is thorough. We see our role as being kind of the guide that supports the committee in the gathering of and the interpretation of data, in the discussions about services and about optimal delivery methods, in the analysis of the fiscal impacts of combining services, in exploration of alternatives, and finally, in preparation of a report which is focused on all of the critical elements and communicates those elements effectively, communicates all the considerations undertaken by the committee effectively so that residents of Lyons understand the implications of what's been discussed. And most importantly, we hope that we can help the committee retain an objective approach to determining what is actually in the best interest of the community going forward. One of the toughest things, and I'll talk a little more in a few minutes about, you know, about some of the challenges that we see coming. But you know, one of the toughest tasks for you is going to be to suspend your discussions and your deliberations, if you will, about whether the village should dissolve and instead focus on creation of a plan that is optimal. That's going to be the focus of the committee, to actually, from this point forward, focus on creating a plan that's optimal and then analyzing what the fiscal implications of that plan are. It's going to take a tremendous amount of objectivity. And hopefully, we can help you accomplish that. We like to kind of think of ourselves as having crossed this field, and we can identify where the mines are laid. The fact that we bring experience to the conversation about having crossed the field and the fact that there may be mines in the field shouldn't be interpreted as a warning to not cross the field. It should be instead interpreted as this is some valuable information that can help you avoid the pitfalls or help you avoid the mines. And that's really, regardless of what your position is, whether you feel like it's a good idea, whether you feel like it's not a good idea. If getting to the other side of the field is a goal, then we would like to help you get there and avoid the pitfalls and avoid the mines. And that's our role. That's why we're here. So with that, I'd like to just tell you that we've got a few agenda items that we would like to cover with you. One of them being the process and the responsibilities of the committee. And Connie's going to talk to you a little bit about that. And then we'll talk about the timeline and about next steps and about, hopefully, what we can accomplish next week. Yeah, we brought some materials. I'll hand them down. Who's there?
Oh, you can.
All right. We brought some materials to help the committee get started. And again, we want to help you hit the ground running. Yeah. So these are in the form of notebooks with some critical information.
I'm going to have this one.
We brought enough for each committee member and for the board, so.
As Diana said and the mayor said, I'm Connie Sowards, and I too am very thrilled to help with the process. I have been in municipal and financial operations since 1973, starting with feds and going all the way through to the county level and to the village level, and now have joined MRB and am thoroughly thrilled to help in any way that I can with the operations that we've learned to help guide you through this process. As Diana mentioned, and many of you have probably already done your homework and know the process, but just very quickly, this was a voter initiative consolidation, started with petitions, the signatures were verified, the referendum date was set, the referendum was held, the referendum passed, and now we're at the point where a proposed plan is going to be done. If it's approved, go to the public hearing, proposed plan, any amendments for the dissolution plan, then for the final plan approval, and then either consolidation occurs or dissolution occurs, or the opportunity arises for 25% of village residents to file a permissive petition for another permissive referendum. If that passes, dissolution occurs. If it fails, no consolidation and no action can be taken for four years. This is actually, there's information in the books that we gave you. We actually gave you a summary of the law. You can go online and get the full, but this gives you everything you need. It's 20 pages full of information. It's in front of the book. Yes, in the front. And then the mayor had already talked about the dissolution plan requirements and the elements. The only other thing that I would say is that in addition to those 14 elements, this also is in your book, is the taxpayer impact that talks about having this committee will need to identify taxpayer impact during the course of the project included as part of the report. And then it goes through and tells you exactly how to go about doing that, cost per capita, total cost impact. And then also, what we did was we put on the bottom from the contract, the different points and the development of dissolution alternatives as well. This is spelled out. Also in your book is the timeline, and you'll see it in there in your three-ring binder that we just gave you. And that goes all the way through responsibility, each of the processes. And I know at the kickoff meeting that Diana and I and the committee will be able to sit down and talk more about the next steps as well. Diana's going to refer to them as well.
The timeline, actually, if I could take just a moment and talk about the timeline, it's pretty extensive. If you pull it out, you'll see that it has a really lengthy list of tasks that we've identified as being critical in terms of completion of the process. We spread it out in this fashion so that you would get a sense of the amount of time that should be dedicated to each task. There's a key at the bottom that kind of indicates, you know, what the symbols represent. The green is, symbolizes the village board, the village board's involvement with that particular task. The red people would be the dissolution committee represents the committee and the committee's involvement in that particular task. And then, of course, MRB would be Connie's mind and Dr. Hattery's participation in that particular task. So as you look at the list of tasks, you can kind of read across and get a sense of the time periods, if you will, that we anticipate will need to be dedicated to completion of those tasks and the logical progression, if you will, of the tasks. You'll notice that the time periods aren't specified as you look across the top. It says period one, period two, period three. We did that intentionally because we don't want anyone to be misled or misinformed. We want to make sure that everyone's aware. We are fully prepared to assist the committee in meeting the statutory guidelines that were established in Article 17A, which is the law that Connie was just referring to and the requirements that the mayor read through the list of earlier. But I want to be very frank and upfront, this is going to be an extremely challenging task. It's going to require a very aggressive timetable. And I listened carefully to what the mayor said earlier, and if I heard her correctly, and I think I did, she's charged the committee with a difficult challenge, and that is to balance that statutory requirement to meet the 180-day deadline, balance it with the board's desire to be thorough and be complete and to do it right. And so we are prepared to support the committee as the committee pursues that balance. And that's why these time periods haven't been specified in weeks or days, or instead it's a period of time that the committee will need to determine whether or not it feels as though we're ready to move on to the next step. So I wanted to explain that part of the timeline. So we'll assist the committee in helping maintain the pace that you determined to be right. So. Next steps. Mayor already mentioned some of these things. The very next step is to host a first committee meeting. And at that first committee meeting, as Mayor said, you'll need to establish a committee chair. So I just want to briefly talk about what those responsibilities will be, because between now and then, you're going to want to be thinking about who among the committee members has the time and the ability to be dedicated. This is going to be one of the most dedicated positions, if you will, on the committee. Although I will say, you all are honorable and admirable people for stepping forward and meeting this challenge. It definitely is, you know, going to require a lot of dedication, and I think your fellow community members have a lot to thank you for for taking on that challenge. So at that first committee meeting, we will need to establish a committee chair. That person's role, those responsibilities will include conserving this essential point of contact for the board and for the consultants, for us. That individual will need to appoint a deputy chair. That person will need to appoint a scribe or a secretary to maintain notes and minutes for the committee as it proceeds. That individual will be responsible for scheduling the full committee meetings. As Mayor mentioned, there will be subcommittees that will be established. That person would appoint those subcommittees, and we'll talk more about that in just a minute. But as the subcommittees will probably be self-organized, a lot of those meetings have to do with speaking with, interviewing staff, both of the town and of the village. It requires a lot of daytime meetings just in terms of people's accessibility. So our recommendation is that the subcommittees be somewhat self-directed in terms of scheduling, but the committee chair will need to help move the process along and help them keep deadlines. So that's quite, you know, that's quite our responsibility as well. That individual, the committee chair, will need to notify the village board of scheduled committee meetings and also the videographer that the mayor has indicated the board would like to employ to record the committee meetings. This, in fact, is probably one of the most important and significant events to take place in the Lyons community. You'll want to keep it recorded, and I think it's admirable, Mayor, that you and the board are choosing to do that. Keeping track of the subcommittee meetings, obviously, again, and the progress, chairing the full meetings and keeping order, that will be the primary responsibility. So that's a long list of responsibilities, so you'll want to keep in mind, you know, all that the job entails and be thinking about who could best serve that role over the next several days. The subcommittees that will be necessary, as Mayor mentioned, public safety to evaluate fire protection and police services. We recommend that that be a single committee. That's quite a large undertaking in and of itself. Water and sewer, we believe, should be a committee, and of course, the related facilities. Street department, highway department on the town side, parks and related facilities, that warrants a committee. Administrative services, office and administrative staff, as well as the finances. That really warrants its own subcommittee.
So you're saying admin and finance is one committee?
Yes. And originally, we had talked a little bit about possibly having court and zoning and codes be one committee. Connie and I, actually, we talked about it today, and it might make sense to have court be its own committee, just because of the analysis of the costs associated with and the revenue that's produced by both courts and the fact that there's been some consolidation of courts with tremendous success throughout the state. So it warrants really some dedicated attention, and so we're going to suggest that that be its own committee. And then that leaves zoning and codes. We would like to ask, over the next several days, that you give some consideration to areas of focus that you feel as though we might need to incorporate into this list of focus areas. And that's something that we should discuss more fully. The committee chair should appoint committees at that first meeting, again, just so we can hit the ground running and immediately get to work in terms of establishing how those committees are going to be operating. So in order to do that, we have created a contact information sheet, which we'd like everyone to put their information on, obviously name, address, contact information, mobile phone, if you have it, how you can be reached. And we asked if you could enter what committees you are personally interested in serving on, and perhaps some of your special expertise, what talents that, you know, you find that focus area to be of interest to you, perhaps because you've got some special expertise that you can lend to that particular process. So if you could make note of that, that would really be helpful to the chair. What we would do is we would then take that information and build the contact list from it, make it available to you at the first committee meeting, and then make this information available to the individual that you select as chair at that meeting for assistance in terms of pairing people up with the skill sets that will help best support the task at hand. So I'll leave this here, and if everyone could, if any of you can start, is the board, staff, and the committee members, so that it can be a committee-based contact list.
Yeah. I was led to believe that our, the village board was not going to be, I see a lot of green dots on your timeline, is involved in this, where it was going to come back to us, presented to us, we were going to take part in building this plan to dissolve ourselves.
Because you, yes, I hear you, and I think where you see the board appearing on that timeline, it's more of the public information piece. Board meetings are that opportunity for the committee to come and report progress to the board, and because of the open nature of the board meetings and hopefully a strong participation at your village board meetings, that would be an opportunity for people to come and learn about the progress of the committee in a very, at a summary level. So that was the intention of, really, that's the communication piece more than anything else. Not as much a task for the village board as it is an opportunity for the committee to come and report to the village board.
Yes, Diana, if I will, the other part of that is that is staff as well. In a lot of the data collection, it is going to be extremely important that the village staff and the town staff do have the expertise for the operations and the costing. So may not necessarily be the board, but definitely going to be both staff.
Yeah, collection of fiscal data, for instance.
So for our committee, what we want to put in, what we'd be involved in would be what our permission requests are, or?
Well, as probably the village board, it's just contact information, just so that committee members have it. But, and truly, your point of contact for the committee is going to be that committee chair, so most communication is going to be through that committee chair, but having your contact information is valuable. So that's why we're hoping that the board and the committee and staff could be in one consolidated list, just so everybody has a convenient place to go look for contact information. So hopefully that will be helpful then. And then last on my list really is to set the next meeting date. The committee meeting, the first committee meeting, we hope can take place as early as next week. One of the things that we were hoping to do is select an evening when there are the least number of potential conflicts with other community meetings, other community events. And it was suggested that Thursdays might be a good, a good date or a day of the week for that. So if possible, if we scheduled the next meeting date for March 7th, I've already taken the liberty of asking Dr. Hattery about his schedule. He is available on the 7th, and will be going to come down for that meeting, and I think it would be tremendous, a tremendous opportunity for you to meet with Dr. Hattery.
So will our meeting be evening?
Subcommittee meetings, we expect that a lot of those would be set by our committee members and be at the convenience of committee members. But yeah, we're going to recommend evening meetings, not because we necessarily like it that way, but because in terms of people being accessible and having the ability to attend, just for ease of committee members. So Connie, anything you want to add?
I haven't covered it. I mean, unless they have any questions or.
Any questions on the timeline or on the next steps?
Will each subcommittee be given guidelines as to what we're supposed to be getting information out of?
Absolutely.
We're not going out there blankly.
Right. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And, you know, the most important thing is to utilize the expertise of staff at both the town and the village, understand, the first task really is going to be understanding services and how they're currently being provided. And that alone is going to be, you know, is going to keep you busy at the outset. But yes, we'll absolutely help with helpful questions and focus, you know, that will help you get to the kernel of what really matters.
Do we have time for that next meeting?
We're going to have a pretty lengthy list of items to go through at the next meeting. But yeah, I think given the short period of time and given the number of tasks, we're going to have to load quite a lot into every meeting.
I think she means the O-line.
A lot of time.
O-line, what can I?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were asking about what we were going to accomplish. Should we, let me just ask, should we shoot for the same timeframe, for the 6:30 timeframe? Is that correct, everyone? I have just a couple of things I'm. I have just a couple of things I wanted to make comment about that hopefully will give you some food for thought. Some people are inherently and understandably wary of this process. Our experience has taught us that there are some difficulties that are just naturally built into this process from the beginning, and it's a process that, to some degree, I'm sorry to say, breeds a level of mistrust. And it, people who sense distrust tend to listen less and assume more, and these are pitfalls that we certainly have experienced, and we hope that we can help you avoid here in Lyons. And the first thing, the first lesson, I guess, that I would ask to be considered is that it is possible to set aside strong emotional connections and strong emotional reactions, to set them aside and to pursue a logical path that could even be painful. People in public service do it all the time. It really, in many cases, it's the first lesson of public service. It's, I used to joke about how every day would be an opportunity to make someone upset, because, you know, when you do the right thing, invariably, someone is not in agreement. It's the hard truth about public service. It's amplified in this situation. So, I would just ask, suspend your disbelief and believe that the people in the roles of public service that appear to have skin in the game. I would venture to say that of the many, many, many people that I've met in public service, none of them are in it for the money, and none of them are in it for the glamour. They're in it because they truly love their community. And I think everyone in this room, that's one common thing that's shared by every single person in this room, regardless of your point of view, everybody is here because they love the community and they want to do what's best for the community. I think the second lesson is understanding that this is going to be a learning process. Everyone's understanding of the functions of the village, of the town, of all of the complexities of providing services, of all the potential changes, all the possibilities, that their understanding and their grasp will evolve as more and more details emerge, as the committee discusses more. Everyone will become far more knowledgeable and will have a better understanding. So, have a little bit of patience, because, you know, it's going to be a short learning curve, and soon, you'll be having different kinds of discussions with people as you learn more. The third lesson is that people's opinions will change the more they learn, and that goes hand in hand with the fourth lesson, and that's that everyone has something to contribute. Everyone has something to contribute, and that wisdom comes many times from surprising places. No one's contribution should be discarded or ignored because you disagreed with them yesterday, because that was yesterday. You should never assume that someone's unique perspective might not have a kernel of wisdom in it that proves to be essential at just the right moment. So, see this as an opportunity, as an opportunity to learn, to grow, not just individually, but as a community as well. And when people are emotional during this process, assume it's because they're passionate about their love for the community. Be forgiving, and by the same token, be careful that your words aren't inadvertently hurtful. People who work in the community give their blood, sweat, and tears every day in the community, and, you know, take that into consideration when you're evaluating services or when you're looking at the greater good of the community. Remember that some of these folks are vested, they work really hard to provide services. By the same token, people in the community work hard as volunteers, as community leaders in their own right. Everyone has something to contribute. The difficult task, I think, ahead of you should be undertaken with a pledge of respect from all parties concerned. Less criticism, more listening, more constructive discussion means a better outcome for everyone here. So, that was really all I wanted to add, and, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you and look forward to next Thursday, 6:30. And we should meet here in this room, is this be an ideal location?
We probably can meet downstairs, depending on who wants to observe, how many people will be observed, so we can gauge that when next Thursday comes.
Okay, great, absolutely. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much, and please, everyone, sign the contact sheet, and if you would also, in the address section, add your email address as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Connie. You're welcome. Does anyone from the panel have a question for Connie or for the village board?
Is it possible at this time that we could have all the different departments broke down into a separate budget and ready for us for the next meeting? Not just a complete budget, the whole village, all the sewer, all water, all the people who work?
Yeah, I can, we can get provided for you. Yes.
Check on you and revenue expenses, everything?
Yeah, I want to know what's going on in each department.
Everybody, everybody who gives the notebooks that we provided gets a budget in it. All that information is right there in their budget as far as wages, how it's broken down, whether it's general fund, water coming, sewage coming. It's all within the budget, and without, of course, presence of, I can explain it to you if you have any questions about our budget. So, there is, do they have?
No.
Okay. We have, we've also set up notebooks with our budget and a couple of other items, so we make sure that everybody gets a copy of that before next, soon as possible. And anybody else? Yeah? Okay, any questions? Board? Okay, thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have a couple of other items that we need to address at tonight's meeting, but we could go on with this data. Can, are you able to stay for a couple of minutes? Because I know we are going to have public participation, and somebody gave a question from the public. Thank you. Okay, because we, our employees have a meeting on March 7th, 2013, and it's about, it's a big safety meeting in Blackton's Glen, we'd like to authorize all our employees to go to that meeting because it's all part of their job. So, if we could have a resolution authorizing the DPW employees to attend this big safety meeting. So, thank you. We have received notice from the Lyons Police Association to commence contract negotiations, and I would like to have a resolution authorizing our village to turn to the negotiating, with the police association. In previous years, it's been 1,200 in our living center that is being, begin negotiations. Okay, so, I have a resolution. Second. Thank you. We still need to schedule another budget workshop, if you have any thoughts about Well, we're doing Saturday, again, we got to go, not go Saturday, we'll come.
We're way too long, because we're going to have to get budget time.
I'm working, I'm working Saturday.
You're working Saturday. Monday? Monday? I can do it.
6:00 AM or so?
No. 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, Sunday might work.
Who's bringing supper?
Yeah.
Sunday? Yeah.
Or later on Saturday, or Friday.
It's okay with me, it doesn't, you don't make, you know, and I'm not sure what time it can come in, maybe Saturday morning. Well, weekends, so, you don't have any weekends? Tuesdays? Do you do Tuesday?
We have Tuesday, I have the village board meeting, and I have that, we're not, I'm sorry, yeah, you're following me.
Tuesday, I have the Tuesday.
Six, six, seven?
Tuesday, senior hour, I don't want to say community service, okay, senior hours. So, if we could have a resolution authorizing Brian to do any hours of service for the porkings, I know that senior class has to do this, and the Lyons Fire Department. Okay, okay. Anybody else? Oh, Mark Grecker has asked that we pass a resolution so that the lane behind the Hatchet Building, and we talked about this about a year ago, be named Hatchet Lane, and that a resolution be passed so that we send it to the state or request.
Which will be a trail, too?
Yeah, trail will be going there, by that's part.
If we could have a resolution naming that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Do that one, do you have any? Mr. Allen?
Yeah.
Also?
Okay, public participation, is there anyone from the public who has any questions that they would like to ask for time or camera? Anyone?
I do.
Go ahead.
This, I know you already talked about, do you authorize all the gentlemen from the DPW to go to this seminar? Paid by per person, or is it a group price?
There's no price. It's answered by the safety.
Other than they get paid to go to the, for the day?
Yeah, it's for, what do you call it, digging, I don't like to do it.
Dig safe.
Dig safe, just call 8/11 before you dig?
Yeah, it's.
I just kind of wondered why we were sending Mike Salom to these semi-recired, because it makes any sense, and then if they're all going to the seminar, there's nobody in town in case anything happens.
If it snows, they'll be in town. If there's an emergency, they'll be right up here.
Seems kind of redundant to send Mr. Salom to something he's retired from.
There might be new information that they, that they'll all need to do, because they all do low pay, the utilities. Do you see Melchior? Anyone else? Okay, so, we have a resolution for here. Second.
Thank you, everybody.